Whoever wanted to share what's on your mind and what you've been up to lately and then open it up to a question answer forum. We were thinking the easiest way might be able to just go down that roll call list and ask each person if you have a question to ask it at that time. And we'll go down the list if that sounds appropriate to everyone.
Sounds good.
Can you, Sarah, can you help us keep track?
Yes, I will. If you want me to call off the names, I can do that.
That would be great. Want to make sure everybody is heard. All right, Dave or Juanita, do you, one of you guys want to start up?
Just thank you, everyone, for being here and thanks for your patience with technology. And I'm really glad that we have an opportunity to chat with the entire county's community councils. This is, this is pretty cool. So I hope we can, yeah, have, have good discussion and then more discussion in the future. We're just going to try this and give it a shot.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Needless to say, since the last time many of us have met, the world has significantly changed. And I know all, a lot of you on the line are probably trying to adapt and figure this out as we go, just as we are. In terms of some of the things that we've been up to over the past six weeks or so. I think first and foremost, we are looking at how can we keep the community and also those who work for Missoula County safe and healthy. And on the county side, still deliver the services that I think everyone expects from Missoula County. And I, my hat's off to all of our staff and, and colleagues with the county. I think they've been doing a fantastic job of stepping up and figuring out how to, how to still operate in this virtual world that we're living in. A ton has been going on, suffice it to say, and, and one of the biggies that we've been working on the past few days has been trying to wrap our arms around the CARES Act. So from a federal level, you all have heard plenty of legislation that's been adopted in Washington DC and dollars that have been appropriated. And we're trying to figure out how some of those dollars that have come, are coming to the state of Montana might get distributed to local governments to provide services to address COVID-19 and to help with economic recovery going forward. So I look forward to all of your questions.
Yeah, I want to reiterate my thanks. I'm really excited to hear what you all have to say and how things are out there in parts of the county that we can't travel to so readily right now. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say. We've been super busy responding to this as a crisis and it's as a relatively new person. It's been interesting, interesting for me to see how our whole incident command structure just unleashes. I mean, these, this is a structure that was designed kind of for floods and fires and such, but it's been really appropriate to this disaster as well. And I can tell you from looking on the inside, we have a whole lot of competent people that have been going super hard to figure out how we can continue to provide services even in the midst of this. And there's some things I'm proud of that the three of us have been able to figure out to do in close consultation with our staff. Early on, we were able to put some money towards a rental assistance fund. We established a COVID fund and we're going to be able to get some more money out of, out to groups out of that. We're waiving credit card fees for doing county business. We're going to be late collecting taxes on mobile homes and on personal property, which is basically business equipment. These are small things, but they're, they're within the realm of things we could do. And so we're doing them. And we're really excited to hear what you all have to say. So that's enough of me there.
Hey, and Josh, just to add, add on to the list of things that we've been working on. At many of your community council meetings, maybe all of them, you've heard from our building permit staff in past months. And you probably had heard that there was a plan afoot to increase building permit fees. And while that still is the case, we, under the circumstances here, made the decision to delay implementation of that until July. So just another mechanism that we're trying to offer folks to provide some level of relief in the midst of this crisis.
And to, yeah, I would add to this little bit of new stuff here. Um, it's not that new, but just probably new knowledge. If I get, you guys correct me if I get it wrong, but I think our burn rate right now is about $22,000 a day that we're spending on, with emergency services and with the health department in response to this. And we are really counting on some state and FEMA reimbursement. This is a pretty intense time to be in local government, given what the spending needs are right now. It has nothing, that, those are needs that have nothing to do with doing regular business. All right, let's start with Sarah. Rock through, or Juan, do you have something you want to add?
Just didn't want to forget about staff that's on the call. If there's anything that staff or departments want to share before we go into open questions.
Juanita, this is Chad from CAPS. I don't think anything to start out with, but we're certainly here and happy to answer any questions as they might come up from the audience.
Great, okay, thanks.
Same for me.
Thanks.
Same for Chris.
Okay, Sarah.
Okay, so Bert Caldwell is the first one on the list.
That's because Bert was scared he wasn't going to be able to get in on this. And so he was early. Bert, I am the chair, the current chair of the Bonner Mill Town Council. And I've got a couple of things. One is, I would like when you guys, you commissioners are doing what you do, and I think you're doing it very well, pay more close attention to the folks that are the least able to survive this and what you can do to help them. There, there are those of us out here that aren't really going to be hurt by it, other than socially hurt. My wife is getting tired of me, I'll tell you that. So. The other thing is, I, this is the most people I've seen at an all council meeting in at least three years, maybe four. So maybe we ought to do all of them online and by electronic means. I don't really have any questions, except I've got a, I've got a person in, I've got a vacancy on my council and I've got somebody interested in it. I might, I just want to make sure that that gets expedited. And I've got new bylaws in to be reviewed and approved that create an alternative person for my council. And I'd like to get those approved so I can put that one in process and see if we can keep from coming up short as much as we have over the past five or six years.
Hey Bert, just, this is Dave, just to follow up on a couple of your points. As far as using these virtual meeting platforms for all community council meetings. I, I think that's a, that's a point well taken in terms of, I think, coming out of this crisis that we're in right now, we're going to be taking a hard look at how we can use some of the lessons learned. Be that meeting format, using electronic means to communicate as, as another alternative to enhance our outreach. So I think that's certainly worth thinking about. Not to necessarily supplant or replace in-person meetings, but I think it's certainly something that could help augment our meetings. As far as your first point, do you have any specific ideas about how we might more effectively reach out to those most vulnerable or in need? Because we absolutely resonate with that. And we were able to scratch together $50,000 early on for a rental assistance program. We're currently, we currently pulled together another $100,000 from our community assistance fund and we'll be figuring out how to deploy that community-wide. But if you or others throughout the conversation tonight have specific ideas, I think we'd love to hear them.
Well, let me, let me say.
Bert, let me toss out a couple of other things that are happening, and you may know about this. We have the COAD, which is Community Organizations Assisting in Disaster, and they have six different task forces. And these are things like economic recovery and childcare and food security and working with groups who are really kind of boots on the ground with the most vulnerable folks. So efforts are being made, not that they can't be made better or more effectively, but there's a bunch of effort headed in that direction.
Well, that's good. I was tangentially involved in the beginning of something that Lee can talk about probably more than I do. But Eric Huspeth, who is the Minister of the Lutheran Church here in Bonner, has started with a group from, well, actually, he didn't start it. I think he was part of it, but it was started with a group in East Missoula. And I think the group is called East of Missoula.
Yes.
They recently got box lunches together and have a pickup point at the Lutheran Church where people who need it can, can pick up the boxes. And Lee, you want to speak a little bit to that, but that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Okay?
Yeah, and that, we've put together that with the food bank, the Missoula Food Bank, who we are picking up, I think about 45, we've ordered, this is a test run, we just started this, we made our order yesterday. We pick up tomorrow on Thursday and our meeting places are different depending on your location. In East Missoula, it's going to be at the Mount Jumbo School from four to six on Thursday afternoon. We have four people who called in. I think we're going to get about six or seven boxes. So we will fill the needs of the four that called in and have extra for anybody else who needs it and might show up. That's, our first test run is tomorrow and we hope to do this every week and get this going. This is going to reach out to Clinton, Bonner, Bonner is our drop-off point. So people will come in from Clinton to pick up their boxes. I'll be coming in from East Missoula to pick up our boxes. And I think some are going up to Potomac. And what it is, is from the food bank, it's a week's supply of food for four, a family of four on Thursdays.
That's fantastic.
Really great happening. Good, good work. Okay, Sarah, do we have, who's next?
Claire Mueller from Sealy Lake Community Foundation.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me to be a part of this. Thank you, county commissioners, for your really hard work and to all your staff on this. Great job on your website. And I've been participating on the COAD calls representing Sealy Lake, which has been really great. And I've got, you know, I've been on conference calls with other community foundations around the state. And I've been pretty active with the Montana Nonprofit Association and trying to get a grasp on what's happening for nonprofits around Montana. I don't have many questions specifically today. I know folks who are on our Sealy Lake Community Council, Tom Brader and Sally Johnson, thank you for your hard work. I look forward to hearing what you have to say. Sorry, I'm going first. But I guess I, from what I'm seeing, you know, there's just such a glut of information out there. So I think one of the hardest parts is people knowing where to go for information. I think your county website is fantastic. But I think also it's like Dave, you were saying, trying to wrap your head around the CARES Act, right? It's like there's all this money that's kind of dropping down and trying to figure out how to position our communities to help make sure we're tapping into those resources. And the people who need to know about different pots of money know that they, like, when they need to go and how to get there. So that's the big need I'm seeing right now. But thank you all for your hard work.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you. Hey, one thing I just want to throw out here, you've probably heard us use this acronym COAD. What that stands for is Community Organizations Active in Disaster. So, and that's part of our Emergency Operations Center. And as Josh mentioned, Commissioner Schlotnick mentioned, there are six separate task forces that comprise that COAD group.
Right.
Okay, the next we have is Devin Jackson.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, so my biggest concern right now, obviously in Lolo, our number one employer is Community Hospital. So we are sort of at a higher risk than a lot of the other communities that are outside of Missoula. I was wondering what the commissioner's stance on our monthly meeting is going to be in May. Since there's seven members on the board, if three people show up, I know that's asking a lot, but if three people show up, we're over the governor's 10-person limit. So what's the commissioner's stance on us having a meeting or not?
And I mean, my, my first take on it is, could you do it online? Could you do it like we're doing this right now?
My answer, let me, let me speak to that, Josh. This is Bert Caldwell. My answer is no. The council members can meet, but the community would have a problem getting, doing that, especially in Bonner, because the internet is so slow in certain areas of Bonner. People would have trouble getting on. We've already, in fact, I've sent it in to CAPS, we've canceled our May meeting.
We canceled our meeting in East Missoula as well.
Devin, do you have an internet speed issue or is there, is there a technological?
Actually, Spectrum has good speed down here, so we seem to have relatively good access opposed to some of these other committees. Obviously, it's going to be up to the chair to decide how we do this, but yeah, in person is just out of the question right now.
Yeah, I, I would recommend either figuring out a way to do it virtually, online, or not in person, for sure.
And Kevin, are you on the line?
Yep, I am. I'm on the line.
If you guys do this online and, and you're welcome to get in touch with our, our IT person and talk through what options are. She'd be glad to have a conversation with you and see if you could dream something up that would meet your needs.
And we'll look at the items that we have, if, if there is anything pressing. I mean, we, we did cancel our April meeting and, and we'll look at, take a real hard look at what we need to take care of for May and see if we can't just do that and then make it public. So we'll, we'll work that out.
Yeah, if you need some technological help, at least you, you're welcome to check, check in with Jason.
Point of interest from the Bonner Council is in our new bylaws revision, we added the capability of a council member being able to attend electronically if approved by the chair. So, you know, we could have quorum, I think, but only one person can do that at a time. We're using electronic medium, but minimally.
Well, and I would say, just as the Board of County Commissioners has, well, it's a work in progress, figuring out how to adapt to conduct business virtually. I would certainly encourage the, the community councils to do the same. Some of that language in bylaws might simply be antiquated and not recognizing that there are circumstances that warrant technological enhancements of meetings, so to speak.
Yeah, and in the past, we've used technology for members that couldn't be present in our meetings and that worked fine. So Devin, I like the question. That's good. We got, and we can discuss further outside of this, this meeting right now.
Yeah, yeah, I figured we would. I just wanted to know if the commissioners had any stance on it simply because we represent commissioners. So, you know, if they said we can't have one, we needed to know. That's all.
Good. Okay.
This is Chad Kraus. I might just throw in there that we've been having to adapt along the way quite a bit to figure these times out. And so we're more than happy to entertain any thoughts you have individually as councils as to how we might help facilitate that and if we can help answer questions about technology or even help in any other way in terms of facilitating something that works for your community. Certainly let us know.
Awesome. Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all my questions answered.
Thanks.
So next we have Doug Anderson.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think Missoula County has been doing a fantastic job so far. Actually, looking at the maps, you can tell Montana as a whole has been doing a fantastic job. But as Montana starts to lift restrictions, do you, as the, as the county commissioners see, Missoula County restricting or taking a less restrictive approach? Or is Missoula County going to lift its restrictions at the same time as, as the rest of Montana does?
So Doug, I'll, I'll throw something out here to start in. That the first piece of this is that we have our health officer, Ellen Leahy, who ultimately makes these decisions, not, not the three of us. Given that, I imagine our restrictions will be a bit more intense than places that don't have our level of population density. So it could be in Macomb County with 750 people or 7,500 people, whatever, the whole county and, or, or Missoula, right? So that's just my best guess. The other thing I know that Ellen's going to be doing is watching the numbers really carefully. And it's going to mean a lot if over the next two weeks, we get no new cases or if over the next two weeks, we get 30 new cases and 10 hospitalizations. So this is the kind of thing that's influx day-to-day. And we have a health officer who is empowered to keep track of it and make, make good decisions.
We are on the I-90 corridor. I hope that we're being really strict about our, I, I'm really all for the shelter-in-place orders that are going on. I think that's how we're keeping our community safe. This is Lee Bridges, by the way, from the East Missoula Community Council. And I don't mean to cut in here, but I, I'm all for the strict restrictions because being on I-90 with Spokane and Coeur d'Alene coming right through here, I'm just real cautious about opening up anything.
Oh, this is Bert, and I agree with Lee. It is much better in the long run to be conservative.
Yep.
God, I hate that word, but it's better to be conservative along the lines of what we're doing than it is to have a relapse. Because a relapse, twice as bad.
Well, you guys don't be shy at all about letting Ellen know as she reads her email and she would appreciate your perspective.
I'll be happy to share mine.
Well, and I think, I think you'll be, and you may probably know this already, Lee and others, but our health officer, Ellen Leahy, has, in my estimation, taken a fairly measured and deliberative approach following the governor's orders last week. So they are, as we speak, taking the time to figure out how some of the next steps will be implemented.
And if you compare what, what Ellen's put in place to what's going on in Yellowstone County, and they're actually a little bigger than us, we're definitely more restrictive and moving at a more measured pace.
I'm very pleased with the commissioners following our health department's lead.
Yep, me too.
And then adding to, to Ellen Leahy's, the environmental health specialists, they, they've increased the numbers of specialists available to the public to help folks prepare for reopening their businesses to keep their employees and customers safe. And so you can give them a call at 258-4755 and someone will help business owners prepare.
And I would just add, this is something we could definitely use all of the, and that is to continue to encourage folks to socially. I was in Greeno Park this afternoon and it was a beautiful day and, boy, folks were bunching up. And, and I get it that people have been cooped up a long time, but please encourage folks to hang in there a little bit longer and keep their distance.
Yeah, if we could, if we could keep numbers from growing over the next two weeks, I'm, I'm going to guess we're going to see more opening. So we're going to, we got to go hard for another couple of weeks here.
Oh, yeah. My family's refusing to hug me and I don't know if it's personal or COVID-19, but I'm going to blame it on COVID-19.
Okay, so next we have Jennifer Moore Schultz from the Lolo Community Council.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I actually had anything. I'm just here to listen, so.
Well, thanks for joining in.
Yeah, thanks for doing this. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Next is Kevin Nolan from Lolo Community Council.
Couple, a couple of observations, some things that I, Lolo, well, I want to, I want to give Bert some credit. He initiated an email contact between the chairs, the council chairs, early on when this started. And that got a lot of the communities, especially Lolo, talking and, and looking out for each other. We've got a business networking group out here that, there's 14 to 17 small business owners that have met in the past every other week. And so that's been nice to, to be in contact with them as far as what, what they're experiencing and any apprehensions they have. The payroll protection plan that the federal program has been nice, you know, and businesses like mine, we've laid everybody off, just even though we're deemed an essential business. It's, you know, we're an in-home service-related business and it's, it's hard to talk people into, you know, hey, come, come get your, you know, let us provide our service to you, even though it fits the criteria. I guess some criticism I might have is, and, and that's on the communities, the business owners. The Sunday, it was a Friday night at midnight when that shelter or stay-home order went in place. The next, two days later, a Sunday morning, somebody hired a tree trimming, had their yard power raked. You know, these professional services coming in from south of the county, from, from Florence or Corvallis, they were under different impressions. And I, I think by and large, business owners are abusing the, yeah, claiming, deeming themselves an essential business. And, you know, without enforcement on that, that, that's been widely abused, in my opinion. I checked in with the school, their, our Lolo School's high number for, they're feeding lunches to kids every day when they come. They average between 250 and 300 meals a day. The high mark was 430 lunches handed out.
So Kevin, how does that work? Pick up a sack lunch?
Yeah. Yep, the kids just come and the staff at the school meets them at the door and hands them, hands them a sack lunch.
And to be clear, it's the food bank staff, the school's not running this, part of the summer food program. And so the food bank is actually providing those.
Well, the, the, the school, the school lunch staff that's there Monday, Monday through Friday, the school is also there.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, I've been in contact with them and they, you know, they're providing that service. You know, my concern was a lot of these kids are dependent on that school. They don't get food at home. And so this is nice that the community's taking care, being taken care of. The food bank itself, they are about double, two-thirds, double to two-thirds more need than has been seen in the past. So that, again, they're being, they're being drawn on. How do we, commissioners, my question for you, the ball fields out here at our school, two or three nights a week, their sports teams practicing, absolutely not obeying the, the orders. How, what do we do that to help, you know, my opinion is if we all work together and get this thing, keep that curve flattened, you know, we all get through this together quicker.
Yep.
What, what can we do to, you know, when, when we see somebody hiring, getting their yard power raked? I mean, that can wait. And these sports teams, they should not be out there practicing. How do we, what do we do there? How do we handle that stuff?
Good question.
I wonder if Chris, Chris.
Chris is a Chris Lowndes break.
Yeah, I, I am on here. So Chris Lowndes, I'm the chief operating officer for the county. So the environmental health team at the health department is the one doing that enforcement. And they do have folks who are available to respond to those complaints. I can track down a number to you to send to you after this meeting. And we can send it out to all the community councils that you can use to do that reporting.
Awesome. Very good.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, so, you know, those are basically my observations. But commissioners, I want to give you a big thanks for the work you're doing. It's neat to see your efforts in keeping this county going the way it is. So good job, pat on the back, social distance, Pat. So good job, pat on the back, social distance, Pat. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So next we have Lisa Thomas, East Missoula.
Hi, everybody. I don't know that I have questions for the county. This has been good information about some of those, like the ball practice and stuff. I'm seeing a lot of people walking at night, which is actually nice. And we're standing on opposite sides of the road when we walk. So East Missoula seems to be getting some social distancing in their after dinner walks, which is nice. I did want to add a comment that I heard at the school board meeting last night that those of us who are being very conservative and thorough about reopening and social distancing are often referred to as overreactive because in the end, nothing's going to happen. So it's worth it.
No, point well taken. If, if a year from now, folks were to level criticism for us for, I guess, being too conservative in our approach, so be it. I would much rather have that than the case that we did not take appropriate actions and more folks got sick or worse.
Yeah, I mean, we look at what's happened in more populated parts of the United States, and we just can't have, that's just, we can't have that here.
Thank you.
Can't.
I guess since I was at the, listening to the school board meeting, and I'm a teacher with Missoula County Public Schools. And although it is expected that Missoula County Public Schools will probably announce on Friday, we're not going back this year. That's looking likely. But also, the beginning of next year is going to look very different also. Because we're not going to be all the way through this yet. They're being very careful about the safety of the kids in this community and how do we bring everybody safely back together. So even next school year is going to be affected. We're going to be making a lot of good changes. Some of them, we don't even know what they're going to be yet because this is still evolving and new things keep coming up. But the district is working on it even into next year and making some good safety. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I may be wrong, but I think there are going to be permanent changes to our lifestyle.
Absolutely.
Okay, next we have Ryan Alter, also from East Missoula.
Hello, everybody. I only had one question. I've been getting asked about testing. And I've heard of a lot of people who have been being turned away. I don't know exactly where they have gone, but they haven't been able to get tested. And I'm wondering where we should be directing people to go.
So right now, if you call that 258-info number, you can have a conversation about testing. And the CDC has nine symptoms listed. And if a person has one of those symptoms, they'll be directed to make an appointment at the fairgrounds, and they can get tested from their car. Right now, there's not enough tests in Missoula County for everyone who wants one. But we do have enough tests for anybody who's got a symptom so far.
Okay.
Nobody's been turned away in this latest version of our testing. So knock on wood, that can.
Okay, and that's the 258-4755.
Yeah, info.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
No, 258-4636 is the info line.
Thanks.
And actually, to go back to Kevin's question, the number to call, I believe, there is the 258-4755 for the environmental health folks who can answer those questions.
Awesome. Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ann.
This is exactly why we have our crack staff on the line with us here.
Give them all a raise.
Yep.
Ann, can you give that number again, not the 4755 number, but the other one?
258-info, so that's 4636. And there are two branches of staff available to assist with questions. One branch is public health nurses. So if you have health-related questions about the coronavirus, and the other branch is staff that are there to help you learn about community resources that are available. So depending on what kind of question you have, you go to one side or the other, and they're there to help you. And they're great.
Do just want to reiterate, though, if you have a symptom and you want to test, 258-info, and they'll get you an appointment at the fairgrounds, and you can get a test.
Yep.
I just want to point out, Montana is the lowest per capita incident of COVID-19 of North Dakota, South Dakota, Wyoming, and Montana and Idaho. So we're doing a decent job. We just need to keep on.
That's right.
Yep.
All right, next we have Sally Johnson and Seeley Lake.
Have to unmute myself. I guess I have, I have some questions. But to give you kind of a background, our mill is still going. It's considered an essential business. And so that's nice. Really has three parts of economic stability. One of it is its mill, the other are retirees, and the other is tourism. And this is really hitting our tourism people. And unfortunately, you know, they've been hit pretty hard in the past with fires and things like that. So I think it's an area that we need to look at because I know that as much as we want to keep health and all of that going, we also have an economic need. Because if these businesses can't recover, we're going to see a diminished community. And so I think we need to keep that in mind. And I also think that we need to think about, for instance, I guess, I'm not opposed to having land, having lawn services, if they can keep their employees six feet apart, they're out in the open. So, you know, I just, I guess I just want to give a different perspective. I do appreciate, I mean, I've appreciated the hard work you folks have done. And I've appreciated those daily updates that you gave and the meetings that you've had. That's been very helpful. I know we've had businesses here in the community that have applied and gotten the payroll protection plan. And so I appreciate the federal government and what they're trying to do to keep the economy going. And I appreciate the citizens that we've, that have really, we have a great community that has stepped up to check on elderly and make sure that they can get, you know, our grocery store has hours for the elderly, or they have pickup now. So I just appreciate the businesses that have really been concerned for maintaining assistance and making sure that the primary needs of our, of our community group is being met. So I guess those are just some of my comments.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you.
Next, I have Tom Browder and Seeley.
Thanks, Sarah. Hello, everyone. I echo what my fellow council members, Doug and Sally, have said. I think we've done a good job up here. We definitely appreciate the counties, like, over in production of information. Because for those of us that get asked questions about this and that, it's nice to know we can find, you know, whether it's testing questions, you know, what the actual rules are and so forth. I have a couple of questions. Our Chair Klaus is not on tonight. We did cancel our May meeting. But I am sure that in June, we will convene, if not in person, then certainly remotely. I'm president of a large homeowners association up here, and we're about to have our second monthly board meeting via Zoom. And I'm kind of a Zoom fan now that they, like Bert said, fixed some of these things. But I think having a meeting that way, especially with the functionality that people can call in if they don't have good Wi-Fi, I think in some ways, we're getting more participation than before. The two questions I have for the commissioners and/or the staff. Of course, we've got a lot of federal land up here. The Forest Service came to the council members last week to say, look, we want to open the campgrounds, really Riverpoint, Big Large, City Lake, in mid-May. And from a business standpoint, I mean, like Sally was saying about tourism, we need that. And the consensus was that if it can be done in compliance with, you know, whatever rules the county has, that's fine. So my first question is, is someone at the county level liaising, maybe with the Lolo National Forest, just so if folks come into a campground here, they know what the guidelines are?
Good question.
Yeah, it is a good question.
Chris, do you know?
Or chat, maybe?
There'll be someone at environmental.
Chris, you might be muted. There you go.
Sorry, I was muted. I apologize. Can you repeat that last little bit of the question with Lolo National?
Well, so the question is, so we've got these federal lands, primarily Forest Service, with the developed campgrounds. And once they're open, to some extent, maybe for tent camping, but not, not have whatever in my being. Did their rules supersede county rules? I mean, you wouldn't think so. We just like to have a unified something. So if somebody, say, called the ranger station or the forest at the SO office and said, what are the rules for camping? We're going up to the Seeley area. That what they would get from them is what they'd get from us or our information center.
Yeah, so sorry, the Lolo, the forest and everything else are covered by the local health officer order. So that order that's in effect for groups not more than 10 or 25 for gatherings outside would be in effect there, too. So the local health order will apply. So I haven't heard any, I haven't seen what Ellen has for accommodations. I apologize. I haven't read that one. I haven't seen anything about camping, but we can definitely follow up.
But we're starting to see campers and fifth wheelers that are out of state. So then I guess a related question, and it may not be answerable now, is camping, say, a big, large campground for 14 days, does that qualify for the quarantine if you're from Idaho or Wyoming?
That's a great question.
That is a great question, and that one I would definitely defer to the environmental health folks. I know that you, for example, if you travel out of the state, you have to be quarantined. I don't know whether a fifth wheel, I would hazard to guess that a tent would not qualify. I don't know about a fifth wheel and whether that would qualify as a home. The main thing is during that quarantine period, you literally can't be out. So you can't go grocery shopping. You can't go do those essential things. Those things have to be delivered to you by somebody you know. So I think that is one we need to take back to the environmental health folks, and gave that number. But I'm just not sure whether a fifth wheel qualifies.
And Tom, we could check on that also and get back to you on those questions.
Okay, that would help because we just get the feeling, I think, Doug and Sally, you feel the same way. It just feels like more people are showing up, starting to see tents here and there out in the woods. So I think the more prepared we are, the better.
Those are really good questions.
Yeah, that's great.
Tom, I might just add to that. This is Chuck Crowser with CAPS again. That we have heard, we heard early on from folks with the Forest Service, as well as Fish, Wildlife and Parks, reaching out to both city parks, as well as our county park program, just wondering how they were adapting early on. And I think we're through the phase of some of those initial discussions. But I know there's been a real strong interest in coordinating and I think doing what you're getting at as far as getting information out to folks that can hopefully be consistent across the various jurisdictions. We'll be having a meeting with the commissioners and Fish, Wildlife and Parks next week to actually talk a little bit more about some of what is, what their approach is in dealing with the COVID-19 response and what access sites might look like and what some of their ideas are. So we have been working through some of those conversations, as you might imagine. They're, we're sort of having to invent some things along the way of thinking about both the public safety side, but also the staff that work at those sites and might be responsible for doing things like cleaning restrooms and facilities, et cetera. So there are some ongoing conversations. I don't have any direct answers. Just wanted you to know that we have been thinking and talking about that with our agency partners.
Okay, well, that's good because, one last thing, and I apologize for these convoluted questions. But at, in Seeley, we have a historical museum that this year will double as the visitor's center. And there's been some guidance coming down from state tourism about visitor's center rules. You know, like Plexiglas Guards and whatnot. There hasn't been really any statewide guidance on museums, although the Historical Museum at Fort Missoula says they will remain closed until Phase Three. Because our museum, like the one in Bonner, like the one in Condon, are relatively, you know, small, one, really one big room. We assume we can operate that under Phase One restriction. But another nice to have would be if the county could maybe summarize what a museum and visitor's center should do, Phase One, Two, and Three. I think that would help us.
So funny you should mention that, Tom. We had some correspondents flying this afternoon between Matt Lotzenheiser out at the Historical Museum at Fort Missoula and Steve Lamar.
In Condon, yeah.
Condon, about when, when their museum or museums generally might be able to open. And I believe, I have not cracked it open yet, but I believe Matt has put together a reopening plan for the museum out of Fort Missoula. Chris might have some additional details there, but we're actively in the process of trying to get to the bottom of that very question that you posed.
If I could just jump into, Tom, these are really great questions. I'm gonna, there's a, there's a page, you know, we have two main websites that we're promoting on the top, the homepage of the Missoula County website. And one is the Health Department and all of their information. And then the other is the Joint Information Center. And there's some great general guidance based on categories. And I don't, we don't have one for museums and specifically what you're asking about. But it's great to get that kind of feedback so that we can run it up the flagpole to the folks at the Health Department and encourage maybe looking at developing that kind of guidance. And Cindy Farr, the incident commander, on her video today, did say they're kind of scaling back on some of their mass communication because they're pulling people in to start developing those guidance documents. So I can pass those along to them and let them, let them know. And I'll include the campground's piece, too.
Great. That'll be a big help. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for your questions, Tom. These are great. Okay, next we have Lee Bridges with East Missoula.
Hi, I want to give a shout out to all of my community members for being so incredibly resilient and jumping to the call for help. I have so many people who have contacted me and offered to volunteer to help others. That goes for members of our board. We have members of our board who are driving school buses to deliver lunches to children. And we have members who are making face masks for people. I'm blown away at the, the coming together of our community and what we've done. I would like to see more of the federal money funneled into helping our, our communities. I know a lot of our communities have a lot of laid off folks, and I'm speaking for my community in that regard. I want to see that they get their unemployment checks. And we're doing what we can to supply the food from the food banks, the school board, or the school, Missoula County Schools has offered the school, the lunches for the kids. And the food banks have offered the foods for the families, and that's greatly appreciated. We have canceled our May meeting. We canceled our April meeting. We do not meet during the summer and won't be meeting again until September. By that time, I do want to get with September. By that time, I do want to get with you all and learn how we can do an online remote type of situation, like we're doing now. I think this is great. I need to get better educated. Ryan Alter, I might be leaning on you heavily for advice. I like the way that we're going, and I really appreciate everything that everybody is doing.
Lee, this is Bert. I'll be glad to help you out with, with the media meetings.
Good. I'm kind of following you. You keep me in your emails, and I keep watching what you guys are doing. That'd be great, Bert. I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I was kind of out of the loop for a while. I went to Utah to rescue two dogs, and I was in isolation for two weeks. And I had to stay away from my husband because he's COPD. So I was in the shop and in the barn and off my computer and away from everything. And I was able to see what was happening off of our Facebook page. And that, right now, we've got some real important issues going on. We've got our corridors, our Highway 200 corridor study, and we've got our zoning issue with the live make that we are helping write the text for. So all I can do at this time is make that available through our Facebook page. So I'm working with the different agencies who are working on those particular topics and putting forth what I can on our Facebook page, although I do realize that some of our members, in fact, are not on Facebook. So therefore, I need to be providing that through our email, et cetera.
Lee, this is Karen Hughes. And, you know, we'll help you figure out other options for outreach for those as you move forward with the zoning. We're happy to help.
Thank you. We appreciate that because we definitely need to be involved with that.
Great.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jerry Dallas with West Valley.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Not really any questions. I think just mostly what I hear is just frustration a little bit. Some folks just really not feeling like there's, I just, people are just saying they're getting conflicting information, and it's just hard to know where their news is coming from. So we just direct everybody to the Missoula County website because it's relevant to Missoula and try to keep them from going to other news sources that might not be as relevant as to what's happening here in our county. So there's that. Just to think, everybody's hanging in there. A lot of people out on the bike path, a lot of people at Frenchtown Pond, a lot of people at Frenchtown Pond, which is a state park. And again, I really echo that same question is about, you know, that's a state park, and what's the jurisdiction? And what, you know, I'm, I'll just, I run there a lot, and it's, it's been very crowded. Today was exceptionally crowded. And it would be really nice to get some clarification on what the jurisdiction is.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
That's a good, those are good questions.
Yeah, and we can't meet, the fire hall isn't allowing meetings. And so we're probably gonna try to do a Zoom meeting for our May meeting. We'll see how everybody feels about it. But we may just hold off and hope is never a business plan, but hope that we might be able to meet in June.
Hey, Jerry, this is Dave. We were, hi, we were all, all the commission was tied up in a meeting when the meeting with EPA regarding Smurf at Stone happened. How did that go?
I'm pretty frustrated. You know, we're waiting, we've been waiting and waiting for the fish tissue sample. And they don't want to do a virtual meeting. They want to do the results in a, in an in-public meeting. So it postponed. So just real frustrated. We're, the admin team is meeting tomorrow. We're having a Zoom meeting tomorrow, and we're gonna try to put some pressure on them to do a meeting because we're just, it's ridiculous to wait. And we feel like we're losing some traction. So, and, you know, we all know flooding's coming, high water's coming. So we're watching it real close right now.
So here's a question for, I guess for Chris. Do you know if in the somewhat near future, the three of us have a call or a check-in with, with Ally Archer?
I do not know if we have a check-in, but we can sure get one scheduled.
Yeah, let's, Dave and Juan, what do you guys think? That's all right?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Let's do that. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Jerry, we'll, we'll, we'll work on getting some answers.
Well, loop us in so that we can obviously be part of that meeting, too. And hopefully we can get something rolling here. I think I've heard from Park Fort Polishin and everybody else that they're a little frustrated right now.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll, we'll loop you all in who would typically show up at these meetings that we have in person with EPA.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, this is Sarah. I can reach out to Ally and get that scheduled.
Thank you. And if you can make sure Anna's on that one, too.
Yep.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, welcome. Sorry, last person, I believe, is Bruce Friedy with Sealy Lake.
How you doing?
Hello, Bruce. Thanks.
Hey, I just want to do, touch bases with you. The rest of the community council up here is kind of right on, right on the mark as far as our, our community. With the mill operating and the, and the other businesses that were either shut down or slowed way down, we, we definitely need those campgrounds, federal and state campgrounds opened up to get some people here. But I, I can echo pretty much what everybody else feels. We do want that social distancing done. But what I've been witnessing myself is I see a lot more family units out there than I've, I've seen in quite a few years. So it's, it's whole family units that, that we're seeing in, in boats, fishing, and, and all that that goes around with the camping. So I, I, that's really about what I have to say. And we'll all get through this.
Thanks. I like that.
Yeah, we will. Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, that's everyone who's on the call.
That's impressive. 7:32 on the note.
Well, frustrated, Sarah, Bill.
Could I go back to that, that ballfield thing I brought up? This is Kevin in Lolo.
Absolutely.
So I, I think I know there's a couple sports teams and the coaches of those. Is there any way to update, maybe you can use your media outlets to what the current restrictions are? I'm being told that they think that the, some of these conditions have changed, and they think it's business as usual again. And I don't really like, well, there's a couple of people I like picking fights with, but these aren't some of them. So I would...
Don't want to be on that list, Kevin.
Well, be careful. No, I'm just kidding. But could, could we do, have a media update from, from you, just reminding folks what the current conditions are?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll work on covering this in, in our, our next little media update. Somebody's doing one tomorrow.
Awesome. Good. Very cool. That's all I got.
Thank you.
So this is Tom in Sealy. I, I'd like to maybe see another one of these community council vertical meetings like this, maybe mid-May, because I think as the mighty nice day up here in the Sealy area, this whole question about, you know, what, how to control an influx of recreational folks might have good information to share among the councils. And, you know, hearing, obviously, the I-90 corridor, you know, people at Rock Creek. Anyway, is that something the commissioners might schedule sometime before Memorial Day?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. For sure.
So, Tom, a question for you, or I guess anyone else on the line. I find a lot of value in having all the community councils joining the call simultaneously. But one thing that we want to also be cognizant of is if a specific community council felt like it would be important for us to have a meeting like this just with their group and their constituents.
We could do that.
We could certainly entertain that as a possibility.
We're totally open to that. Just, just let us know, and we'll get it scheduled.
Great. Thanks.
So I just heard two things. We're, we're going to schedule an all-community council meeting sometime in mid, late May. So all community councils across the county can hear what each other's updates and issues are. And then we're also going to, if, if a particular community council wants us to comment specifically to them, we can do that as well.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We don't want to force ourselves on anyone, but if, if you'd like to have something targeted towards your geographic area with the commission, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Well, that's great. Guys, you're the source of all knowledge, right?
All right. Does anybody have any closing remarks?
Thank you for providing this.
You bet.
Thanks a lot.
Your honor.
Yeah, obviously, I wanted to thank you. And it works both ways. We're here to take the community message to you guys. Is there something you want us to take back to our community when they email us and ask us questions?
Well, I would say some of, some of the information numbers and...
What I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say the, any social media posts that you want to look to and share from the City County Health Department and from Missoula County. And then the, the two main websites that we have at the Health Department and the Joint Information Center, and then those, those two phone numbers. Thank you so much for asking. That's so great. We really appreciate anything to help boost the, boost the signal, as it were.
All right, then. Everybody, have a nice evening.
Great.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.